We are pleased to have all of you here this evening to work with the town of Sparta in candid form. We, our Friends of the Library who are sitting up here, Joyce Bees, Barbara Thompson, and Joe Elrod, and I, Pat Polly, are all members of the Friends of the Library. And, of course, we are very honored to have ACTV and Kate Urban here tonight, and she is doing the recording of this, and then it will be dispersed throughout the town and wherever else it may go. The Friends of the Library actually runs the used bookstore in town, Books and Friends. If you haven't been in, we encourage you to stop in. Our funds from that go to support the library in some form, whatever use the library wants. We're available there to assist. We're pleased, of course, as always, to be here in the library, and, of course, we're honored that Debbie Brewer, our librarian, is here also with us this evening. We are pleased that at least five of you are with us this evening, and the sixth member was able to come, was unable to come. We're going to begin with a short presentation by our mayor, Wes Brenner. Wes?
Thank you, Pat. I appreciate everyone coming out. I just want to give you a couple of ground rules for tonight, and give you some information that's going to help our candidates answer some questions here early on. Our number one thing that we have is, under, out of control in the town, is social media and the rumors and stuff that goes around, and people that put false information out there. So I'm going to put a quick stop to that, and I'm going to help these guys out, because I don't want them answering questions to false rumors. Does that make sense? Also, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or vibrate at this point in time, because we don't want that to disrupt our candidates when they're giving their answers. I think the Friends of the Library, of course, Kate Urban, Debbie Brewer, doing this. Our council, our town council is made up of five seats and a mayor's seat. The five council members are the voting party in the town. The mayor does not vote unless it is a tie. That means that one of these guys has to be out, and if there's only four, it's a two-two, the mayor breaks the tie. That's only happened one time in all the years that I know, that I've been mayor and before. These council members right here, or the candidates right here, are taking a step out to serve the community. They are taking a step out to serve the citizens of the town of Sparta, which is different than the county of Allegheny. Their responsibility is to the citizens, taxpayers of the town of Sparta. They represent the town of Sparta. Again, there's five seats that are there. There are three seats that are up for grabs. So out of the six, three of these are going to be on the council next year. In the town of Sparta, we have a population of about 1,800. That varies during the summer months when we have some immigrant workers come in and work. So our population year-round averages about 1,800. We have about 900 registered voters in the town. And most of the time in a town election that we've had, we usually average anywhere between 25 to 30 percent voter turnout. We have 10,000, or, not 10,000, 1,025 taxpayers that pay taxes in the town of Sparta, and we send out 1,254 tax bills that are sent out. That means that several taxpayers own multiple properties, okay? So that's what, that's what that's about. We currently, we collect our own property tax at the town hall, and we took that over as of last year. And our property tax collection has actually went up over the past year. We collected 20,000 more dollars in taxes this year, so that's good for us. Since the earthquake happened here a few years ago, our town has went under some massive reconstruction. I want to inform each and every citizen here, and on social media, on Facebook Live, the whole nine yards, that all of the construction that you see going on in the town of Sparta doesn't cost our taxpayers one cent. This money that is being used to fix our town with roads, water lines, sewer lines, and now we have 15 more million dollars to build a new sewer plant facility, is all given to us through the earthquake fund, which was 24 million dollars to help with construction costs, another seven to eight million that I got from the state to pave our roads, and the 15 million that I got from the state to fix our sewer plant. All in all, 50 million dollars' worth of construction being done in our town and will be complete within another year and a half. That's something else. That's never happened before. Doesn't cost us a cent, so it's not, we're not raising taxes. We don't look to raise taxes if at all possible. Our council is committed to doing that, okay? So to put the rumor to rest, we are not frivolously spending our taxpayer money. In fact, the state of North Carolina taxpayers are paying for what our construction is. If we didn't get it, it was going to go to the coast, and you'd be buying new beaches down there, okay? And I'm just going to end it right here with this right here. These guys right here, the gals right here, are taking a big, big step out, okay? They're going to represent the town of Sparta, and I can tell you from firsthand, once you step out in the public eye, you're in the public eye 24/7. 24/7 accessibility. So I thank you guys for doing this. I appreciate that. Look forward to hearing your answers to a lot of questions tonight. And again, for, just for some instructions for you guys, when you see that yellow card being tossed up there, you have 30 seconds left to talk. Once you get the red card, go ahead and wind it up, because you're done, okay? Any questions from the candidates? Are you all ready to go?
Ready to go.
All right, I'll shut up, and now let's get this thing going.
All right. We will begin with the questions, and as we begin, Joyce and I will take turns in asking them. We will provide you with the amount of time that you have to respond to it. And then, of course, that's where the timekeepers come into play. It'll give you the 30-second warning, and then at the end of whatever the time called, we'll expect you to stop pretty quickly. With that in mind, Joyce and I will begin, and I actually have the first question today, which is not really a question, but an opportunity for each of you to begin telling us why you want to be the candidate. Include how long you've lived out in the town of Sparta, and what specific strengths/qualifications would you bring to the town council. We'll begin on the far end with Cole Edwards, and you have two minutes to respond to the question.
Cole Edwards, I was born and raised here in Sparta, moved away for about nine years, and returned in 2013, so I've spent roughly 32 years of my life here. As the general manager of a growing and successful business, I believe running a town is very much like running a business. I care about the people of the community, and we do what we can with what we have to provide for our community. And all in all, we're in about the bottom dollar as well. I want to represent our town. I've done so over the course of the past four years, and what we've done over the past four years, I believe, speaks for itself, so I don't need to go through and list the accomplishments. But I also bring some fresh eyes, I believe. I am involved in the community, and so I hear from a number of people. Growing up in poverty myself, and able to come out of poverty, I think I relate to almost any and every citizen in our community. So when they come to a, when they come to me with a concern, I can relate to them more so than anyone else, I believe. And then I would lose my train of thought and concede to the next question.
Okay, Turk, would you respond?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thanks to all of y'all for coming out. Thank the library for putting all this on, the mayor. My name is David Turk Evans. I've lived here all my life. I was born in Ennis, the little park down here in Alagudity County. We moved to Sparta when I was in the sixth grade. I was fortunate to grow up over a great man and coach called Bill Jarrett that got me into baseball. I graduated in 1971. I was fortunate enough to get drafted by the California Angels. I spent three years trying to make it to the big leagues. I come home, raise a family, and for the last 40 years, I've coached baseball, basketball, football, for many kids, girls, boys, from eight to 18. And I've worked with a lot of parents, and ain't had too many complaints over that time, and I still do it to this day. And I want to try to work with and get something in this town for these youth, and I think that's why I'm qualified to be a council member. Thank you.
Barbara, your turn.
I'm Barbara Halsey. I grew up in Sparta on Main Street. I lived in an apartment with a single mother above the Allegheny Theater, Spartan Theater. And during the day when she worked, I was in school, but when she got home, I roamed the streets, and I visited every small town, Mitchell's 510, Halsey Drug, B&amp;P Drug, all of the local businesses. And I've just always had a passion, and I love this county. And then a little Erwin, and if you read the article in the paper, I think you saw that, I mentioned that she was a teacher, and she always preached this to us. "I want you to leave Sparta, learn something, come back to Sparta, and give back." And those words have never left me. I left Sparta. We have lived several different places. I was teaching in Winston-Salem, and Asheville, and Charleston, South Carolina, in Sparta, and Wilkes-Barre. With 32 years of teaching experience, I think that prepares you for a whole lot. But I've also been a business owner. I've owned a bookstore, which this wonderful Friends of the Library took my place when I went out of business. And I have also run a bed and breakfast. And running a bed and breakfast for 26 years will teach you exactly how to communicate and work with people. And I have the greatest passion ever, and if you've seen me on the streets working at Music on Main, Saturday in the Park, and serving on all these committees that I've served on by volunteering, you will know why I'm here.
Millie?
Appreciate you ladies, as everybody's already said, letting us have this opportunity and getting all this together. Appreciate you folks coming out. Like Turk, guys born and raised here, is what to say. And I've actually lived in the town of Sparta for four years. I did operate a business for 20 years. I was on the council back in the 90s, in case anybody doesn't know how ancient that I am. And then I have served two terms consecutively recently. My concern is that we provide services and take care of our folks here in town. A lot of folks here in town are on fixed incomes. They have worked hard, they bought their homes, they've paid the bills, they've paid their taxes, and it's our obligation certainly to provide for them and all of our new residents as well. So I am a severe fiscal conservative. I believe that we should take the utmost care of every one of our tax dollars and try to spread it as far as we can, and make sure that our folks are not priced out of living in town. And that's a huge concern. Of course, our infrastructure needs, as the mayor already explained, where we, a lot of things were focused on, other than some of our major needs back when I first came on board. But we have been blessed to get funds from the state, and we are addressing some of our major needs. We have many, many more. We've had five water leaks in the past five weeks. We have major needs in our water lines. We have major, we're working on our roads. Of course, that's always a concern. Waste water treatment plant's a big problem. But we have a lot of things to do. So it's my goal and my wish that we take care of our administration as far as we can, to take care of all of our citizens, and, of course, I provide them the safety that they deserve through our police department, and just take care of our folks, and that's why I'm here, and I feel like I have a track record to love.
Thank you. Chris?
Hello, everybody. My name's Chris Sheffield. Nice to meet everybody, nice to everybody, and thank you for coming. Thanks very important part of our community to get together and to learn what everybody thanks and to go out and vote. I would like to thank the Friends of the Library for being here, Mayor Wes Brenner. So what qualifies me? I've been kind of like Cole over here. I've been a manager of several different companies over the past 25 to 30 years, where I've led quite a bit of success, and, you know, it takes a lot of hard work, it takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of mental mindset that gets you there. So I feel like that really is one of my strengths. I'm able to multitask, I'm able to prepare in advance for situations that some people may not foresee, and that's kind of been my job with my, with my previous job is figuring out what's going to go wrong before it goes wrong, so that you already have a plan of fixing it before it happens. So I've got a lot of foresight with things like that. Part of the biggest reason I want to do this is actually sending back on the backside over there is my daughter Abigail, and all the other children in Allegheny and Sparta, really. But I want them to have the best opportunity to make the best of their lives, and to hopefully be able to stay here in town if that's what they want to do. The housing crisis, as everybody's mentioned, we need affordable housing for the people who aren't able to make incredible amounts of money and just afford whatever house they want. People who are from here deserve to stay here. People who want to come here deserve to be able to come here. I appreciate Sparta, I appreciate everything Sparta is. There's a good reason that I came here, because this is where I want to be, and this is where I enjoy. I like being able to ride through the country, go 35 miles an hour, and not be forced, be pushed down the road because somebody else is in a hurry. I love this area, plan to stay here for a while, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And may I remind all of you to, if you could speak up, please, because we are recording this and it's being broadcast at the same time, so use your outside voices if you would as you respond to questions.
Okay. It's my turn now, and I'd like to ask each one of you to think about some of the positive initiatives that have occurred in Sparta in the last three or four years for the town. And additionally, in thinking about the positives, also some of the negatives that you think need to be addressed at this point. And you will have three minutes each to answer that question. Do I need to repeat each time? Okay. Turk, we're going to start with you this time, okay?
Some positives in the last three years.
Yep, and then some negatives.
Well, we've seen a lot of positives. I think done the last three years. Like the mayor said, fortunately, we got it off from an Iowa earthquake, got a lot of, a lot of face fronts in the town. We got a lot of homes built back, and it didn't cost taxpayers not a penny. And we've done a lot of good things to the town, but there is a lot of negative things too that's been happening to the town. As when they, when they first, I think, started trying to think this plan out, and they didn't think about the farmers and people that 95% of the people in Allegheny County still does, a lot of farming. They got a lot of business. They got to come into town, get gas, they got to come in. There's a lot of businesses. They's got a lot of big trucks. And, boy, I think it went wrong in a lot of this. They just went too far on making too many corners and making everything too short. But we've done a lot of good by getting the water in. We mended that, that's been in there for 50 years. But to me, this was a two-bit project for something like this to happen to just let a group of certain people or whoever do it. I think it should have been voted on through the county, or at least the people in the town limits, because I get throughout this county, and it's divided this county a little bit, what's happened. Because a lot of them cannot get into town. They run over these sidewalks, they run over this. And I understand we want to bring people to here, and, but there's different ways to do it too. But, that's about all I've got to say. Thank you.
Barbara?
Well, I'm going to go back to about six years ago, when we did not have Muddy Creek, we did not have North Flow, we did not have Craig. Pizza Ria was just moving on to Main Street. We didn't have Laconia. So I'm a firm believer that one business brings another. And those of you who know me know that we started Music on Main, and I started it with a little bit of money that I had left over from a festival. And the first time we did it, we had about 100 people on the streets, and it wasn't a big deal at all. And the next time we did it, it grew a little bit, and about the third time, the chief of police came up to me and said, "Barbara, this is getting serious. I think we need to close the streets." And I said, "I'm all for doing that." So if you will go and talk to these businesses, they will tell you that they came here because of that one thing, and that had nothing to do with me doing it, but it was just something that we, we didn't know it would work. We put it out there, and it worked. And it's been a very positive thing. It's brought a lot of people into the town. Negatives, it's really hard for me to find negatives, because I'm a positive person, and I honestly feel like every time we walk down the street and we see one new building getting refaced, Heather Klein's building, Ashley Flowers' building, what Gary Polier's previous building, any building that's been redone is a positive, and we took it from a negative to a positive. It bothers me that we have empty storefronts, we have owners of businesses that do not fix up their buildings. I would love for us to do that. I think you get one chance to make a good impression, and people come into your town. Some people come one time, they look at it, and they never come back. But most of the time, if we work together, and I'm a firm believer in this, we have got to work with the town, the county, and everyone to come together to make Sparta be the best it can be. And I'm going to say, one big positive to me has been the election of our mayor. I don't think anyone in this room realizes what he has done for us by going to the state and getting money for us, and that's saved us all a great deal, and I compliment him on that. Thank you.
Millie?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm going to try to speak up. I've been accused of not speaking loudly enough. My brother told me one day, he said, "I hate to go in the grocery store if you're there, because I can hear you all over the store." I said, "Well, you don't have to acknowledge to anybody that you know me," you know? But certainly, we've had, had a lot of positives in our town. As had already been discussed, we're grateful that we got the money from the General Assembly of West, certainly was the bird dog on that particular thing, so we have been able to address some things. Now, the negative being, these things would not have been a crucial need, they have, had not been, pretty much ignored, to, to put all of our efforts and all of our funds and all of our push towards doing the streetscape. So that was the big thing, and that was, a lot of people wanted that done. So a lot of things were left to languish on the, on the side, because all of our resources and all of our interest and all the money we could get from anybody anywhere in bar was going toward the streetscape. So that's, that's water over the dam. The only thing that I would like to mention about the streetscape, and I've been here a long time, the one thing that we had anchoring our downtown was Farmers Hardware. And when it became evident that the town was going to be completely closed for at least a year, it made it financially indefensible for that business to remain open. And, and the loss of that is understandable, but that was a huge loss, and that was anchored to our retail, and that was to me, to me, a negative certainly, because that was, that was something that, that brought a lot of people downtown. So that was a negative. The, the, the streetscape was designed to slow down traffic. The whole concept was to make it more pedestrian-friendly, and they've achieved that. And in so doing, they narrowed the streets, they took half the parking places off of Main Street. It makes it very cumbersome and unhandy for a lot of folks, whether they've been here forever, whether they've just come here to make the turns, they feel uncomfortable going down the street. And this is not just people like myself pulling a load of hay, pulling a load of cattle down Main Street, or trying to turn. This is average folks. I see them every day, you know, and they stop, and they back up, and people look, and they vulgarize. But, but the reason it was designed that way was to slow everything down. So if you look at it from that perspective, it most certainly did slow things down. So in the future, we're going to work on our infrastructure needs, we're going to work on the things that we said, and try to, as I said earlier, take care of all of our citizens and make it affordable for them to remain in Sparta, because they just showed me the way they're called.
Thanks, ma'am. Very pleased.
Okay, some positives, there's so many of them here, I mean, one of all down Main Street. I mean, it's a great little quaint town that we have here. I agree with Millie, Farmers Hardware is certainly being missed. If we could get traffic down both sides of Main Street, and you could take a nice loop and walk through, it would be great. So there's many empty buildings up and down Main Street. I would love to see, figure out how we can get them off field with businesses, or, you know, low-rent housing, apartments, things like that. The streets here, all these streets that have been paved, it's going to make it so nice for us, not running around getting bottles and stuff like that. One of the negatives on that, there are some drains here in town, and I know you guys have looked at that, but I hit one down in my truck the other day, and it about threw me out of, out of my driver's seat. I hate to hit that in my car, in my wife's car, because it'd probably tear, tear the bottom out of it. So I'd like to see things like that handled, so that we don't have hazards around town that tear people's cars up and potentially hurt somebody. Other negatives, there's, you know, maintenance is really the biggest thing that I've seen just walking around. Went around Crow's Park, there were several things there that could be fixed relatively easy. I don't know how long it's been like that. I usually take my Shepherds, they're a little bit obnoxious, so we go to better Sparta Walk. I can't really take them to Crow's Park to walk. So we don't go there often, but, you know, just if you're going to spend the money on stuff, let's take care of it. Let's keep it up, and let's be smart with our money. I guess that's really about it.
Cole? Barbara's next question. Oh, I'm sorry, Cole.
I still need to, yeah.
Yes, Cole, we don't need you.
We have some, I don't want to. Positives, I mean, one, go back to streetscape. I don't think you can view it as anything but a positive. I am proud to call Sparta home, and I'm proud when people come to visit, because, I mean, just walk downtown and you'll see why. Another positive, I think, is the increase in our police force. We have increased the numbers, but in turn, with the hiring of our new police chief, we have also seen an increase in community involvement. And I think that goes a long way, not only for our youth, but it just, I think it makes everybody feel a lot, a lot more safe, knowing that they're there. We have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into our park. If you haven't been to Crow's Park, you need to go. And really, that is something that I'm very proud of. Is there still work that needs to be done there? Yes. Is there still work that needs to be done throughout town? Yes. Also, I think, over the past four years, we have had a number of businesses not only pop up, but also succeed, and I think that goes hand in hand as well with streetscape and a number of other things. Our tourism has increased. I see that as a positive as well, because that keeps your tax dollars in your pocket and lets somebody else put the bills and things. Also, a lot of people see the earthquake as a negative, not even speaking to it monetarily, but after the earthquake, I saw our community come together in a way that I have never seen it come together before. And to me, that was just a reminder of why I want But after the earthquake, I saw our community come together in a way that I have never seen it come together before. And to me, that was just a reminder of why I wanted to move back and it was for the people. We all came together. I mean, I remember immediately after it happening, going out and checking on my neighbors, all elderly neighbors. And we, we came together, everybody helped one another. So, so I take a positive from that. Negatives, you can throw a stick and hit a dilapidated building in our town. And I think that is something that's easily addressed and that we can do so with ordinances and that kind of thing, just for the beautification. And also a negative that I see is a lot of people. There's just a lot of negative and nasty people that are very outspoken in our community. And it, it really does cause a divide. It's not, it's not because one thing happened or another, but we need to go back to the day after the earthquake and work together to build our community.
Thank you. Now, for the next question. What is your vision for the next four years for the town? How do you convince or work with other council members and staff to make that vision a reality? We'll give you three minutes to respond to that and we'll begin with you, Barbara.
Oh, my goodness. Well, looking long term, I would love to see Farmers Hardware taken care of because in walking door to door and meeting people in town, I have been asked that question so many times. And I'd love to see every empty storefront filled. We've got, the shops we have, I would put up against, I would put them against any little town, Going Rock, West Jefferson. The ones we have are great. We just need more of them. And we've got to really be smart in the way we do things. We, I, I had an eye opener when I went to the last town meeting and I listened to our police chief talk about the fact that two police officers cannot possibly do all the work that we need to have done. And when I heard him, with the statistics that he gave, talk about how much time is spent when a situation occurs at the hospital and one has to stay there and that leaves only one to take care of us. I hope to see that in the next four years, the fact that we can have a safe environment. We have a beautiful, beautiful little town. We have wonderful, wonderful people. But we've got to clean it up. We've got to be smart in our investments. We've got to find a way to provide housing for these people. It would break your heart if you could go door to door like I've been doing this last week and see the way some people have to live. It would absolutely break your heart. So they deserve a chance at an affordable place. We have a business in town, Sparta Candle Company, that has an employee that is having to drive from Winston-Salem to Sparta because they cannot find affordable housing. That's unheard of. And in the next four years, hopefully, we're gonna look down the road and we're gonna see that we've come a long way. And we're gonna have to work with our COG, our Council of Government, with the Regional Housing Authority. Our COG provides a grant writer. We've got to have somebody writing grants, finding money. We can do this, people, if we all work together and we stay positive. And every time I hear one of those negative comments come my way, I just let it go in one ear and out the other and I just keep going forward. And that's what we've got to do. And so my vision in the next four years is to make us not bigger, but to make us better and smarter. And we're here to take care of you all, our town citizens, and that's what I want to do.
Thank you. Melly?
I would say for the next four years, we will have to continue to do the infrastructure things that we're doing. Honestly, that's all I can say. We do have a lot of people, as Barbara just mentioned, we have a lot of people in this community that are in need. We have a lot of people on fixed incomes. We have a lot of folks who, as I said earlier, worked in these factories, who built the homes. They, they pay their bills.
Kelly?
Excuse me.
Why don't you raise your voice just a little bit? I want those people out.
So my vision for the next four years, the, the measure of any community or any town or any society is how we care for our most vulnerable. In our town, in the case, in this particular case. Are we caring for them? Well, we've had to go up on the water rates, we've had to go up on sewer, garbage collection, things that we didn't have total control of. But all of these things make it harder for these people to live here. They make it more difficult for them to pay their bills. So my vision is to try to keep those things in check and to use our money as wisely as possible. We've managed to create models out of tax increase. That's good. There's several things that we've done that, in my mind, we could use that money in other places, but the council voted to do those things. So the housing situation is dire. Now, we live in a capitalistic society. And when we were working on streetscape, we had a gentleman come to one of those meetings promoting streetscape and he says, well, we are going to build an apartment house in Elkin. And I thought to myself, why did this man come to this meeting and tell us that they were gonna build an apartment house in Elkin where they could make money? So the problem we have, federal government, HUD and so forth, has come in, Northwest Regional Housing Authority. They have provided low income, valuable, very valuable, low income and housing for a lot of people. But will they do that again? We don't know. Will private investors come and do that? It would be nice if they did. But the private people seem to be content with taking homes that become available and turning them into rental property and new places and those types of things. So the housing is, is an urgent thing. I don't have an answer for that. But I do, I do care very much about our, our folks and try to make it affordable for them to remain here and not drive people out. If we drive them out of town, we defeat their purpose. So that's my vision, is to take care of my folks here in the town of Sparta.
All right. My vision over the next few years, I really want us to come together as a community. I want to see our older generation meeting with our younger generation, get the younger generation to come to these Music on Main's and do what we need to do just to bring us all together as one group and one mind and one, one vision, you know. Let's, I know everybody don't see things differently, but you know, we can compromise. We can all give what we, some of what we want out of this. We can, you know, maybe a Music on Main could be more directed towards our kids to bring them out one, one time a year, just so that they can have fun and they can, if they can feel like it's for them. You know, I feel like a lot of these events that we do have are for our older generation, my age and up. And, you know, not everybody enjoys all of, all of that same music in this stadium. So I'd like to see it diversified a little bit on that, on that end. The buildings, like I said before, I wanna see all these buildings filled with anything. I mean, whether it be a business or apartment complexes, let's fill them up. Let's get people in here. And let's just make our city or town great. I mean, let's make it inviting to tourists. Let's, you know, be nice to us newcomers here and let's, let's let us merge into our, into our community because we're bringing in some good ideas. We're bringing in, you know, a lot of stuff. And yes, the housing crisis, I don't have a good answer for that either. But we do need to be able to provide affordable housing. It is, I can tell you firsthand, it's, it's a daunting task on the house here in Sparta. Very, very expensive and I would like to see that get a little better hopefully. Or at least, maybe we have more businesses or more jobs where people can make more money and afford bigger things. So I just wanna say, biggest thing, just come together as a community. Let's all work together. It'd be great. Make our town wonderful. And just continue what you guys have already started. I mean, obviously I can root for a reason because you have the right town. You know, you've done a great job getting it to this point, so.
Would you mind repeating the question, please?
What is your vision for the next four years for the town? How do you convince or work with other council members and staff to make that vision a reality? Three minutes.
My vision would just simply be to be better than we are today. And I feel if, if I was given the opportunity to answer that question four years ago, whenever I ran, I, I would have given the same answer. And now looking back, we are better than we were four years ago. I, I feel that our number one priority is housing. It's not just entry level or low income housing. It's housing for every income level. We, we have to address that first and foremost before we worry about our empty buildings on Main Street, before we worry about creating jobs. Our people have to have a place to live. And if they don't have a place to live, then the rest is pointless. As far as businesses go, over the past four years, we have had a number of businesses start. We've had a number of businesses succeed. I feel that as a town, we should support said businesses. And any startup businesses that may arise as well. And, and I don't know what that looks like, but maybe something along the lines of the town providing grants to help those small businesses get off the ground. Over the past four years, I have learned to work with my fellow councilmen. And I feel that as voters, no one meets everyone's criteria. You all vote for one person for their set of ideals. And I think it's very important to have a diverse group of people representing the town so that way everyone is fairly represented. And then we can work together and discuss those ideas that are brought forth to the council and decide how to move forward. And we can do that with a diverse group, ensuring that everyone is represented.
All right, here's the next one.
Thank you. Well, my vision would be to try to keep all the taxes down, try to keep these people where they are able to live here in Sparta. But my vision, I go back again to the youth. You look at what we got here in town now. We got a lot of stuff for people my age. And we got a lot of stuff for young people like Mr. Ever said about Crow's Park, which is a great place for little kids. But what have we got here in this town for kids from twelve to twenty, or twelve to eighteen? Back in nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, when I come to graduate from this high school, we had a theater, we had a drive-in, we had a bowling alley. We had game rooms, we had dances, we had everything in the world for anybody to go. But where does people go now when they wanna go to the movies? Where do they go? Below the mountain or do they go to Gaylax? We've got nothing in this town and they talk about wanting to bring people into town and here to live. If I had a family, just like when I moved back from Mount Airy, I stayed there one year. Kids getting old, I didn't wanna live down there. But we had a lot of things to do for kids then. What can you push for a family that's got kids to do except a few months of recreation ball when everybody don't play ball? But I think I could work with the town council and work with some grants like Coe said to get something in here. There's a lot of building, I guess, old grocery store down here in the thing. It, it would make a super theater and a skating rink, just anything. When people do come here and say, hey, they have got things to do for my thirteen-year-old daughter. They have got things to do for my boy. But I just think we need to develop some stuff in between. We got great stuff here for elderly people to do, great stuff for young kids to do. But the way I look at it, we've not got nothing in the middle. And we need to fill that hole in the middle with something for the middle people to do. Instead of them having to drive to Gaylax to go to a movie or go on some horse to just skate or put on some kind of thing just for kids. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I'm assuming that you folks have read the strategic economic plan for the town. And so my question for you is, how would you work with the county commission towards its implementation? Does that make sense? Two minutes to answer that. Can we start with you, Melly?
This strategic plan was a wonderful plan.
Would you speak up, please?
They did and, and this was done back in two thousand and fifteen because they tried to get some money. They actually did this overall, went and opened up a plan for the county. And that's fine. And they came in and they did it and that was good. So our bunch decided, well, we're gonna tailor it to the town. And that was a wonderful thought as well. So we spent twenty-nine thousand dollars to match money that they, this Atlas group got to do that. And We're Edge Electric chucked in a bunch of money too. So of course, We're Edge Electric money is basically coming from us as well. And, and those ladies were smart and nice and good. And, and they looked at that plan and they updated the statistics in there, which anyone else could go online and done the same thing. And then they basically came out and said pretty much what the plan said before, you know. You got, you need to get more jobs, you need to get more housing. And, and those types of things. So I didn't see it as, as a huge step forward. Now, the county, we don't have a problem necessarily working with the county when we reach out to them as a council and as our town manager and county manager, and they work together with respect to one another. And we respect their limitations. They respect ours. But the problem that I said in an open meeting was a problem that would be the plan that they did, this huge long range plan, it doesn't address the fact that if, if you want people to, if you want something to happen in your town, then it comes back to capitalism. Now, this fellow over there in West Jefferson, he was from New York. He came in and he wanted to invest millions of dollars in that old hotel over there. And he did and that's great. We, we don't, there's no mechanism there for us to attract investment. And the town can't do it. You have to have private investment. We've got, the town's done the infrastructure. We've got everything in place that we can do. But it comes down to, if someone wants to invest in our community and these empty buildings everybody loves to beat on, as soon as somebody wants to invest and upgrade those buildings and make something out of them, they will. We, the town, has done, we got the infrastructure, we did our part to make this a nice place for them to pick up and go. So the plan was good and it was nice, but it didn't really say anything new in my mind. I've seen these plans for years.
Okay, so one thing you'll find out about me, if I'm being heard about a subject, I'm not gonna speak hard too much. And I am being heard about this subject. So I do not wanna waste your time on that. But as far as working with the county commissioners and stuff, I think you just have to have a certain level of respect amongst each other and understanding that each one of you has your limitations, you know, but also have your ability to do different things. So you need to work amongst each other and just be respectful and, you know, try your best to, you know, get your opinion out there without being ugly to other people for their opinion. Just, you know, take it all together and let's find a good common ground and let's, you know, work on it together. So that's all I've got.
I, I would love to work with the county on the strategic plan. But at the end of the day, they don't, they don't have to. There's nothing that says that they do. This isn't their plan. It's, it's the town's plan. We're, we're the one who allotted the money as well as with grant from the USDA. It's the town Sparta's plan. We can only ask that the county work together with us. If, if they do not, then it's up to us to move forward and implement the plan. We can have the greatest plan in the world if we don't put it in motion. So, so at the end of the day, if the county doesn't wanna work with us, we still have to follow that plan. And I honestly, I don't, I don't know what that step by step direction is. But again, in that plan, housing is addressed, business recruitment is addressed, workforce development is addressed. There's a number of issues that we all already know that face our community that are in that plan. So we just have to take it one piece at a time. And again, I revert back to what I said earlier, housing has to be at the forefront of the strategic plan. If we don't have people... strategic plan. If we don't have people that can live here, the plan is useless. So honestly, to, to answer the question about working with the county, we can't force their hand. We can only ask.
Can I ask a question?
Uh huh.
Now, I've not made this set the normal thing, but is this the group, the ladies from Ohio that come down and put on the thing? Is this, that's the group? Is that the group? And did the taxpayers they paid? I can't see that for a minute. I'm done with glasses. I'm, I'm sorry. My head's hurting. I can't wire. But I did go to that meeting down there. I did see the last end of it. Everybody's got opinions, and that's what Sparta, but my opinion is if we pay people to come in here to tell us how to build Earth City, and with all the construction people and all the people that we've got in this town that does that business, I am not for that whatsoever. I don't want somebody to come in here and tell us that you all got to build y'all's town like Boone, or like West Jefferson, or like somebody else. This is Sparta, North Carolina. We need to bear our own identity. They want to bring people in here, but why would we want to look like everybody else? To me, if you want to bring people in here and tourism, you got to be something different. You got to have something different than the other people have. Or if they get to the point, like when this parkway is done out here, the tourism through this town will slow down a lot, because they'll be staying right on that parkway. I stay on the parkway a lot and talk to a lot of people. But I just don't believe in paying taxpayers dollars to tell, to people to tell you how to build your town. I think we got people here smart enough and the construction enough to do and make a wonderful place for everybody to live right here in the county and not have to take advice from people out of Earth County.
Barbara? Well, I have a different perspective on this from everybody else that's spoken. And with all the respect in the world to Turk and to Nellie, I was extremely disappointed at the town meeting when the Atlas people presented their strategic plan, and Nellie voted against it. She was the one member who voted against it. And I'll just speak to the fact that I'm chair of the Blue Ridge National Heritage Area, and we've been going through a strategic plan for the last three years. And any successful business or organization that I know of has to have a strategic plan. The Allegheny Arts Council went through a strategic plan. You, you have to have a plan in front of you so that you know which direction you're going. And in the Allegheny News, Bob Vanberg summed it all up perfectly. And a lot of you were in focus groups. I know you were in one, I was in one. We all were, had the chance to come to meetings and express our needs and our concerns and our desires for what we want in Sparta to be. The ladies who came and put this all together were professionals. They know what they're doing. That's what they do for a living. And they came and they said, okay, if we want to save the town people money, like Nellie just mentioned them in to go, we don't want to increase taxes. Well, then how do you not do that? You bring new businesses into your town. You use those tourism dollars, local tourism, forty-seven point seven million dollars was brought in. We were higher than any county, according to our population. When those people come into our town and they spend money, it keeps us from having to spend so much money. And we've got to pay attention to these things. These are stats that all counties use. We got a grant to help pay for this. And to me, it's going to be a big waste of time and investment if we do not take the advice of what they gave to us, and we don't proceed with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next, next question, Chris, we'll start with you. Please identify what you believe are the top three assets of Sparta, and describe how they might be promoted or preserved. And you have three minutes to respond to Davis.
Okay, top three assets. I'm going to go, probably number one is our new entrepreneurs and businesses here in town. They've really done a good job. Put Sparta on the map, Sparta Candle Company, my guy there, National Mind, you know, pretty cool. Right here in Sparta, we've got something that everybody in the whole nation probably heard a little bit about, you know? That's pretty cool. The street, the main street is great. Being able to close it down for Main, for Music on Main is great. But I want to see it filled up with people when we do have these events. You know, I want to see thousands of people out there. But, you know, like the Heritage Festival, really, really good turnout at the Heritage Festival every year. And, you know, that's great. I mean, all these small events that we do are just wonderful, in my opinion. And I think they can all be improved and be expanded upon, and they could even better and bring more people to town and diversify and things like that. So then my third one is honestly going to be the people. Sometimes people have different opinions, and sometimes it gets a little heated. But y'all, there's, there's some great people here in this town, in the county. I've met so many of them through my job. And we really got a great community here. And I think if we can come together, we can make something, and it'll be great.
Repeat the question, please.
Please identify what you believe are the top three assets of Sparta, and describe how they might be promoted or preserved.
Number one is our people. I've mentioned it earlier when discussing the day after the earthquake and how we all came together. Our people, there might be a number of things that bring people to our area. But after they leave, the thing that they talk about is how awesome our community is and how nice and caring the people are. And to preserve that, you just got to keep them here. And there's a number of things that I spoke about that would keep them here. Secondly, would be our beauty. And I think that's easily preserved with parks and that kind of thing. But our beauty is untouched. We are, in fact, a hidden gem here in the mountains, and we have to compete with other beautiful areas. But there's not any that compete with Sparta. And lastly, I think opportunity. You can come to Sparta, and you can quite literally do anything that you want to do. You can start a business doing anything. We, we sell soap and candles to people all over the world for crying out loud. Opportunity is here, you just have to go after it. And so I think that those are the three.
My three assets, where you got the Blue Ridge Parkway, you got the New River over here. Back in my young days, they used to promote the New River and Parkway to get people to come here. Used to have canoe races and all kinds of stuff. But there's another, the third thing, that is, like Coe said, the beauty of it. The, if, if they could build some softball fields here and start this Top Gun Girls and Boys softball, these stores downtown, and these people would never have to ask for tourism again. This place would be packed. Because these girls and these boys travel, and they love to come to Allegheny County, because it's cool, it's beautiful. And the reason I know that me and the mayor used to play, we used to put on big Fourth of July tournaments back, and people took us three weeks to play. People come from everywhere. And, but we can use the resources in the river, the Blue Ridge Parkway. But if, if I'm elected, I'm going to try to push to, we need to build some new, some more ball fields. And that would really bring people in this town, for the stores, for the restaurants, for the motels. And I'll just give you a good example. Independence does it. The last one that they put on over there, I think it had to turn away something like twenty-five ball teams. And all these ball teams travel, and they stay overnight. And it's a big thing. My son was recreating here twelve years ago. He tried to push us. He had the land, but it was always excuse, excuse, excuse. And I pushed it twenty years ago. But if somebody invested some money and some people, that would be bring a lot more opportunities to this town too. And thank you.
Well, I actually asked myself this question in 1995, when we were deciding to move back from Charleston, South Carolina. We had everything there. We had great playgrounds. We had great schools. We had plenty of things to do. Why would we leave a place like Charleston, South Carolina, and move to Sparta? Well, the number one thing that I felt like that we needed to come back for was quality of life and the people. And anytime you ever ask anyone what they love about Sparta, it will always be the people first. The other thing, being a teacher for thirty-two years, I loved the school system here. And I still think that we have one of the best school systems in the state. When I taught at Piney Creek, I had fourteen kids in my classroom. And you tell me that you cannot do a lot with one teacher and fourteen kids versus one teacher and thirty-five kids. And we know people, and we know places where kids can go and be safe. So that was huge. And another thing is, and I hope that I've had a part in this, is the music of this area. Our Allegheny Jam program, our Allegheny G-Blade, our Kraus House, that's huge to Sparta. And we are diversifying our music by bringing in Music on Main. We don't always bring in bluegrass. We're bringing in all kinds of music. And I want you to really think about how our nonprofits especially, and I'm going to be partial to Allegheny Arts Council, because I chaired that for two terms. Think of all the things that the Allegheny Arts Council brings to this community, that if we did not have them out working as volunteers, unpaid volunteers, and begging for money from you, from organizations, from everybody, to get, to provide these events that we have. That's, that's what gives us the quality of life that we have. I mean, most parents want their children to be exposed to the arts in some way. Look at all of the amazing artisans that we have in this county. It blows me away. And I think that with the people, the music, the arts, the education, we've got it all. We just need to maintain it, keep it, and keep working together, and sow the seeds for our generation of kids that are going to come behind us. As I've said many times, I'm not going to be here to see everything that I want to see done. And if you look at this table, if Turk hadn't shown up, I was going to say with wisdom, with age comes wisdom. But he's right there with you. But seriously, we have got to sow the seeds of opportunity for our children. And we've got to make it a better place to live. And I believe without a shadow of a doubt that we can do that.
Thanks, Barbara.
And we're ready to go.
Nellie?
The red flag.
It's not the first time.
Should, should we have some more?
Nellie?
When they came up with this idea some years back, to hire another bunch to come in here to tell us how we should promote ourselves, they came up with this thing they called Authentically Allegheny. If I remember correctly, there was a couple hundred thousand probably done for that whole process. And they came out and asked us how we thought we should, what they, what we should promote and so forth. And as you can detect, I'm not a big fan of asking all these other people what we already have. But I told someone, I said, they were talking about getting a slogan for this, to, to market us, to brand us, a brand, slogan. Authentically Allegheny is what they came up with. Well, that's not proper grammar for Sparta, which isn't, nobody cares about that anymore. But Authentically Allegheny. So that's wonderful, if you happen to know what Allegheny was. But I told them, I said, I will give you a slogan, and I will not charge you a dime. And here's your slogan. Allegheny County, a great place to be. Now, wait a minute. A nice, a nice place to be, whatever you want to be. Now, you think about that. First, it's a nice place. It is a nice place. It's quiet, it's nice. And I'm talking about Sparta as well. To be whatever you want to be. Now, if you think of that in the abstract and the literal, you can be a young family here, you can be an entrepreneur here, you can be a farmer here, you can have a mini farm, whatever you want to be, whatever your, your, your love, your passion is. So I still believe that our asset is, this is a nice place to be, whatever you want to be. We have to make it affordable. We have to do everything we can to provide in the town of Sparta. But our asset is still, it's a nice little town. I can take my dog out and walk in the morning, it's quiet, you can hear the birds chirping, you see deer bouncing around. It's a nice place to be. So to me, that is our one, two, and three asset. It's a nice place to be.
Okay. This could be a little shorter. Your sort of closing statement here. Why are you the best candidate for the town council? Give you a minute and a half to answer that question for us. Coe, back to you.
Man, I've really got to talk about myself, don't I?
You can talk about it, Coe.
Honestly, I'll revert back to being born and raised here. I was born and raised into poverty and lived in poverty a lot of my youth. Lived with substance abuse as a kid. And I rose out of all of that. And so I think that I am very relatable to anybody and any situation that anybody is facing. So as someone who can relate and put myself in your shoes, I can think and try to make decisions based on where you're at in life and where you're coming from. I can be a voice for you when you feel that you don't have one. And pair that with my experience for four years on the council, and my experience as a leader of a growing and successful business. I think it's a great combination.
You forgot to mention me.
You'll get to it.
Oh, maybe.
Yes, sir.
Well, if you want somebody to try to keep your taxes low, workers for, get some youth in here for some stuff to do, and just bring some good common sense to the board. And that's why I'm asking for your vote on November the seventh. And thank you all.
I think I'm the best candidate for the town council, because I literally have been preparing for this since I came into this world, I think. Born on Main Street in Sparta, I dreamed of making Sparta be the best it could be. I would walk up and down the streets, and I'd look at a corner and I'd say, you know, if we could just put some flowers there, that would make that look better. If we could just take that sign down, that would make it look better. I've done this all of my life. I've been a business owner. I've got a passion that will not stop. I have a little energy. And I have a son that says, Mom, it's time to start weeding the garden and to quit. And I don't plan on ever quitting. And I plan to work as hard as I can to make Sparta be the best it can be. And I think I'm the person to do that. Thank you.
Well, folks, it doesn't really matter that much what I think. It matters what the voters think. It matters what the citizens think. I, I hope that I have a track record that, that is indicative of my technique and my priorities. The town is a business. It has to be run like a business. It's not about what everybody wants, or what this one or that one thinks would look nice or be nice. It's about how we continue to provide services, how we continue to make this a safe community. Our budget for our police department went from half a million to eight hundred and seventy thousand in the last year. We need every single one of them. We need every single one of them. We had to authorize in our last meeting, the hiring of another police officer. So while I think I'm a good candidate, I am a known person. This is a business. This is not one- This is not law and law and, this is not utopia, this is not some wonderful experiment where everybody gets to have everything they want. This is about balancing the funds that we have and providing the maximum services, taking care of our people, and being, my favorite word that my town manager hates when I use, being physically proven.
So for me, I would have to say, just as a, as a community here, you guys have got a very good panel of people up here, you know, so I don't wanna put it all on me, I think everybody up here is pretty great. So, um, but what makes me stand out a little bit different is just my integrity as, as a person, I'm gonna tell you how it is. If I don't know something, I'm gonna tell you I don't know. If I'm sorry about something, I won't tell you I'm sorry about something. Don't be straight up with you. I'm not gonna pull punches on you. Um, you're gonna know where my thoughts come from. My thoughts may differ from most of the town's people or something, and if so, then I'm gonna listen to you guys, and I'm, I'm gonna adjust mine, 'cause my, my opinion, I'm here for you guys. And my opinion is gonna guide my decisions, but if I see that my decisions aren't, or what my, my thoughts aren't in the popular interest, then I'm gonna listen to you guys, and I'm gonna take that into, you know, it's gonna weigh into my decisions in the future. So I'm very respectful of everybody. I will say I'm working class man, I've worked since I was fourteen years old for everything that I've gotten, I'm very proud of it, and I would like to continue to work for you guys so that we can grow this community into something wonder, even more wonderful than it already is.
Thank you. Thank you for, uh, for all of our candidates for being here this evening and participating. And for all of you vote, you voters out there, I want to remind you that the county elections office is the polling place, and that date is, uh, November the seventh. The polls are open from six-thirty a.m. to seven-thirty p.m. Uh, photo ID is required when you go to vote this year. Um, so if you have any other additional questions that you might come up as a result, uh, that you need information about the election, call the, the county elections office for that information. I want to especially say thank you to the candidates for being here this evening. I want to say thank you to Kate Irwin and for being here and, and providing the, uh, output to all the, uh, people who are gonna be watching this along the way, and I want to say thank you to the library for, uh, for allowing us to come and, and be here this evening. Uh, with that, we are adjourned.